And I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Cook?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lonergan?
Here.
Oldnentl? Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Wormowski?
Here.
Williams?
Mayor Esert?
Here.
City Attorney Beer?
Here.
You have a court?
Very good. Is there a reading of the minutes this evening?
Make a motion and accept them.
Alderman Hopkins, sec by Alderman Lonergan. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Petitions tonight?
None.
And any communication?
No communications.
Okay, and claims are in the hands of the aldermen. Is there a motion to see to pay the claims? Alderman Cook, second by Alderman Large Oldnentl. All those in favor of paying the claims, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor's report, there's one item, the resolution confirming the reappointment of Chris McMinn to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of the city, term to expire December 31st, 2022. And is there a motion for Mr. McMinn?
Take the motion?
Alderman Hopkins, sec by Alderman Cook.
Be resolved that the City Council does hereby give its advice and consent to the appointment of Chris McMinn as a member of the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners for a term January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2022. Voice votes.
All those in favor of approving the reappointment of Chris McMinn, please respond by saying aye.
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 Opposed? City attorneys report?
Thank you. Two items. First, a resolution approving amendment to the agreement for provision of administrative adjudication services.
Is there a motion? That's Alderman Large Oldnentl, second by Alderman Scott.
Be resolved that the City Council does hereby approve the agreement for continuing provision of administrative adjudication services with Amy Jackson and Ramel Camp Bradney Law Offices.
Any discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Oldnentl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And before moving to the second one, if you would mark on your agendas under the consent agenda, item 300 Finance, IT and Personnel, that's the one that we are holding up action on at this time. Second item is the resolution making minutes of certain closed sessions of the City Council available for public inspection.
Is there a motion? Alderman Large Oldnentl, second by Alderman Hopkins?
Be resolved by City Council that those executive session minutes set forth in Exhibit A attached to this resolution are hereby open for public inspection and the remaining minutes as set forth in Exhibit B, shall we make closed?
Any discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Oldnentl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski? Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. City clerks report this evening?
The items on the city clerk's report were sent to you in email. If there's any questions on any of those first four, please let me know. And number five is a resolution approving the change order number two for the multi-use path at Lake Jacksonville. And that is a decrease in some and increase in some other quantities of material.
Is there a motion to approve the change order? Alderman Scott, second by Alderman Lonergan?
Be resolved the contract change order number two dated October 18th, 2019, reflecting an increase of $16,761 in the contract price for the multi-use path improvements at Lake Jacksonville is hereby approved.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to let the council know that this did not come to Parks and Lakes. It's not been to council, nor was the change order. We didn't receive notice about the change order until this evening. So while the path is finished, I think it would be nice if these change orders came before the council. Even though it's coming out of the gambling money and everybody's in favor of the bike path, I still think that it should come to council when these type of financial decisions are being made.
If I could second that, why don't, hopefully we can table this and consider this at the next meeting because, I mean, we haven't really looked closely at anything. And as Alderman Oldnentl said, it didn't come before the committee.
It's done.
Sorry.
Yeah, did we approve? Did we pre-approve all the changes, though? No, but I mean, how can, how can we say we're gonna, we're gonna make all these decisions and then after the fact, we're gonna have you approve what we decided without asking you if you wanted to spend the money?
I think what Lori is suggesting is that while this work is done and you don't have a lot of choice, I don't believe except to approve.
Can you pass on that?
That in the future, we'll request or at least require change orders to come before you, before the work is done for approval. So you have a chance to consider it. And occasionally, there may be something comes up on an emergency basis. This probably wasn't, so. So certainly if you want to make a motion to table, you can. But I don't know that there'll be any change.
Right.
I would agree with that. I don't think there'll be any change with it, whether we table it or not. The work's already been done. However, I do agree with.
Yeah, we can all, we can have all, I'll direct the department heads to do all the change orders.
Well, and I think if it's substantial, you know, if it's a couple hundred dollars or even a couple thousand dollars, I, I think it's up to you, you know, to approve those. But when it exceeds $15,000, I think that's substantial. And those type of change orders, I think, should come to council.
And it tends to be a hit or miss on which ones come to council. So.
Normally, you'll always get the utility change orders through because you always have engineers who are putting those together. I think the problem arises when there are change orders in projects which are, and cities doing Parks and Lakes or something like that, where you don't have a group of engineers preparing. So that's where we need to address.
But we did have an engineer, we did hire.
Yes.
For this bike path.
They weren't out there.
They weren't overseeing.
Like overseeing it when it was done. Preliminary, yes, we had an engineer.
I mean, if you look at the paths in general, from the plans that we received to the final implementation, there were a lot of changes. I mean, the path's not where the plan said the path should be. And there's things like, there were some fences put up because the path is too close to the road. But if you look at the initial plans for the path, the path was farther away from the road. So there was these costs that went into the path on the back end to modify it when it didn't follow the initial plans.
I'll pass the word on.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Okay. Is there a second to table?
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Yes. We've got a motion.
A motion.
And second to approve would just be, discussion's over, just a vote.
Any more discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Oldnentl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Any, any public comment at this time?
I have a couple of questions about the property taxes. I was talking with Ron and just asking how many months we have in reserve. And he said it's about seven. Is that, as of this year, will that increase after the budget for 2020 is approved?
Is it what? I'm sorry.
Is that going to increase after the 2020 budget is approved? Are we gonna be up to eight months' reserve?
The auditors recommend seven months, six, six months.
Six months. And we have about seven now. I'm asking, will that increase to eight?
Yeah, the year is not open yet. I don't know what bills are out there.
So.
Do we look at the gain in surplus after the 2020? Will we gain an extra month or two?
That's my question, correct?
I can't hear you, Jeff.
Are we going to, will we be gaining another month after, in the 2020 budget? Or will we be still at that seven?
Is the city making any progress in gaining funds in that reserve?
I did hear.
They don't? All right. Is the city making any progress in gaining reserve funds in that account?
It stays between six and eight months.
He did say in the last workshop that we're up about a. We're up about a quarter million more than last year in the revenue rate?
Last year, we pulled out like 1.1 million to pay for the.
Last year, we pulled out 1.1 million to pay for the new fire trucks, I thought, about that much.
And how many months did that bump you down?
So we went from 11 to seven. I think at one point last year, you said we had 10 or 11 months in reserves.
One month's reserve, based on the math Ron and I just did, is about 1.1 million. And if it's recommended, we have six months. And Mayor Esert has said before, if we have more than the recommended, it can hurt us if we have to go to the state or federal level for grants in case of emergency. So if we were to use a month's reserve to help cover pensions, we could use that seventh month. We would still have the recommended six months. And we could cover more than half of what you're needing for the pension funding, which means to cover the rest of the needed pension funding, you could cut the tax levy down to 1.25% and still get the money you're needing. And keep in mind, he did say in the last workshop that we made, the city, the community, I say we because this is my tax dollars going into that fund, too. More than a quarter million more because all of the other revenues are doing so well. So we could potentially use that seventh month, still stay at the recommended six months, not be in danger of being turned down for emergency funding because we have too much money in reserves, cover half the pension that you're lacking, and only have to use 1.25 increase on the property tax levy. Just keep in mind. And if it, if we're going to roll into another month in reserve, you could potentially cover the whole pension funding from the reserves. Zero percent increase on tax levies and still have the six months' reserve that's recommended. Is that correct? I think my math's correct.
But you're right, we could take money out of the pension fund, or not, I'm sorry. We took, we could take money out of reserves and use the pay off the pension. Something we could do.
And still be at the six months recommended. Meaning the city would still be doing very well as far as reserves. Because if we go 2.5, the city's portion of the tax levy is going to be up a full 25% in the last six years, seven years. Despite a continual population decline, our property taxes continue to increase. So 25%, even though I know it's just on one piece of the pie, the others are increasing as well. I just wanted to share that math with you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, consent agenda items tonight, Finance, IT and Personnel, Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items tonight. First is a resolution authorizing payments from the capital improvement fund for certain improvement projects. Number two is a resolution, excuse me, authorizing payments for the general fund for services rendered.
Okay, utility, Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three items tonight. Number one, resolution authorizing payments from Water Works and Sewages Project Fund for services rendered improvement project. Number two, resolution approving change order number one for the wastewater treatment plant boiler HVAC rehab project. Number three, resolution approving a quote for the wastewater treatment plant bar screen rake repair and ISO move.
Is there a second for the consent agenda? Alderman Large Oldnentl? You've heard the items under the consent agenda. Is there any wishful for further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to please call roll.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Oldnentl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, committee reports, Finance, IT and Personnel, Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item tonight. It's the second reading of an ordinance leveling taxes for 2019 and ISO move.
Is there a second? Alderman Wonkel?
Being ordained that the city of Jacksonville hereby establish the tax levies for the coming year in the amounts for the annual fund for general corporate purposes. $4,082,863 for the taxation for the purpose of expense of the Jacksonville Public Library, $520,000 for the police pension levy, police pension fund levy, $1,151,700. And for the fire pension fund, $903,400 for a total levy of $6,657,963.
Any discussion?
First, I'd like to apologize to everyone and to my constituents that I wasn't here at the last meeting. My dad was in the hospital. He ended up getting the pacemaker put in. So my dad is a bit of a tax nut, and I was in the hospital with him, and he was very angry with me that I wasn't at the meeting. He wanted me at the meeting instead of in the hospital with him. He doesn't even live here. He's just listening to a little bit too much talk radio, I think. So, but one of the things I wanted to bring up last week, or last meeting, which I didn't have the opportunity to, is, and I, I saw the discussion that was on, it was on YouTube, thanks to the Springfield Daily for putting that online. I was able to see that and read the minutes. But we need a certain amount of money, about $250,000, I think, to pay for the additional payments for pension. And so we're raising property taxes approximately, or 2.5% to raise that additional money to pay for the increase of payments that we have to make to the pension fund. And the discussion was, we need that money. We need that property tax increase to pay the pension. But I don't think that's really true. I think what we should do is, the other taxing bodies in the area, we're limited to 1.9% this year, which is the CPI, PTEL limit. For, that's pegged to inflation. And I think it would be really good if we can model the other governmental units in the area and limit ourselves to 1.9% increase. And bottom line, that's about $50,000 that would, we would bring in less in taxes, in property taxes. When we have to make all the payments to the fire fund, the police pension fund and to, and to the library fund. So none of those numbers would change on our, our, our property tax request. But what I'm suggesting is that we cut the amount of money that we're putting into the general fund from that tax increase. And just like Ms. Riley mentioned, property taxes in Jacksonville have gone up about 25%. Just what our request is for, from the taxpayers. But if you do the math, in 2012, our equalized assessed value of property in town was about 233 million. This past year, it's 245 million. So the city of Jacksonville itself, like everything, all the property, all the businesses, all the homes, all the addition, additional property built, all the renovations and whatnot, that's only increased 5%. And in that time, the, the city of Jacksonville's growth in property taxing comes up 25%. And the other thing, like Ms. Riley mentioned, is population. Our population's going down. I guess we'll find out the real answer next year with the census, and we'll find out what our population is. The estimates that have been coming out every year have been showing a decrease in, in Jacksonville and all rural areas in Illinois. And I've heard lots of complaints about the state and state pensions. And if you drive around town, you're seeing a lot of for sale signs. We usually see them in the spring, but there's a lot of for sale signs up right now. And they've been up for a long time. I haven't talked to the, anyone with the Realtors to get any hard data on trends if it's changed over the years, but just from driving around, it just seems like there's more properties being sold. And I've heard people say, you know, it's like, I'm just leaving town. And we're losing businesses. And one of the ways, one of the pressures we have for people is that people are complaining about property taxes. And in some sense, the smartest thing you could do is just like live outside of town, where you get all the benefits of Jacksonville, all the work that we do for the community, and then you don't have to pay that property tax. So I think we have to try a little bit harder to keep our property tax right downtown. So, sorry, I don't know the exact numbers, maybe, Dan, if you could interpret with the exact numbers. But if I can make a motion to change the property tax request to a 1.9% increase from a 2.5% increase. And that would keep all the payments for.
Motion to amend?
Motion to amend, from 2.5% to 1.9%.
The best we can do right now is make the motion in that form because going through, I am not able to go through and reduce everything. So I can give you the exact dollar amounts for each one.
Okay.
Here. But if the motion, you see the second, it passes, and then you approve that, skip it, I'll just have to go back and plug in the numbers to the correct amounts tomorrow as we sign off.
And, and my motion would be to not change the, the money that we're collecting for fire, for police. It's just for the, the general revenue fund part of that. Would be decreased point, total, the total decrease would be 0.6%, which would come out of the general fund request.
Didn't school district, are they 1.9?
Yeah.
They went to five.
Well, they, they ask for five every year. They always ask for five, which is their maximum, but then they'll pull back to whatever the CPI is.
I think they asked for five to try and capture any increase in the assessed valuation each year. But then the PTEL limits will reduce it to the 1.9. Steve, I'm not, I apologize, I'm not sure. You're basically asking for a 1.9% limit for the increase, keeping the police and fire pension amounts as we have here.
Correct.
And reducing the library and the general fund or the annual fund.
Well, just leave the library fund, but just what goes into the general fund would be reduced. And that money's approximately 50,000 total.
I'm just curious, though, was the motion made and seconded for the current? Does it have to be?
Yes, motion made and seconded for the current, and Steve has now made a motion to amend.
Motion to amend to a 1.9% increase.
Needs a second on that, and we can have further discussion.
Okay, is there a motion, is there a second for Steve to amend? Now.
You can have any further discussion you want, and then a vote on the amendment.
I respect your numbers, Steve. I'm just trying to figure all this out, getting it thrown in front of you, because I am trusting our officials also with the numbers. When they brought it all the way down to 2.25, they say that this is all we need. Now you're saying we only need 1.9.
Well, the amount of money that we, that they requested, the 2.5%, which is approximately, ends up to be about a $250,000 increase in the general tax increase, or general tax request. That would be what we have to pay to the pension funds because they went down in the past year because last December was a bad year in the stock market. So the, the stock market just didn't do as well as it did the previous, the previous 11 months. So that, and then they had some changes in actuarial assumptions for the state. So the police fund, the police pension right now is 53% funded. And the fire pensions, about 29, about 59% funded. And we have to make additional payments to get up to 90%, I think by 2040 or 2045, whatever it is.
They keep extending that, so, yeah.
But who knows? But I mean, that's going down the line. But what we have to pay this year is about an additional $250,000. So, and 1.9% is about $50,000 less. So basically, what that's going to do is that's going to come out, the, that's going to come out of the, the. There'll be about approximately a 50,000 decrease in the property tax collected for the city's general fund. So we still have, we're still going to collect all the money for the pension funds because we have to.
Right. We just won't be putting anything extra in general.
Yeah. Otherwise, CD will come down here and yell at us, I guess. So, someone, someone from the state will come yell at us.
Do we have any idea, when the state takes over the fire police pensions, do we have any idea what those costs are going, is there going to be any administrative costs that the city's going to have to put in? Is there going to be changes? We, we have no idea about that.
See, the way it will work is that it'll be a pooled investment fund. We don't know what the charges are going to be for those pooled investments. It wouldn't be that the city has to make up, or it wouldn't be that the city has any additional charges because that's going to come out of the pension fund. It'll mean that we may be less funded if those expenses are more than what the increased return is because of the pooled investment fund. So you have no way of knowing where it's going to end up. If, if the idea that the pooled investments are going to bring in quite a bit more than our local investments, should be okay. But there's a percentage, I'm sure, if it's just a percentage or a flat rate that's charged on the management services that we don't know.
And, and I think Alderman Cook brings up a good point that, you know, that, that is something to be concerned about. But I don't think at this point, we should worry, or we can't worry about something that's not known. And if you look at the requests this year, the, your recommendation was a 2.5% increase in the property tax request. So that next year, we can go up to 5% or we can go up to 10 or 15%, whatever we need if we have a truth in taxation hearing. I mean, whatever we need to get to the pensions, we're going to have to do. My, my personal preference on that would be, of course, to cut money from the, the request for the general budget. I wouldn't be in favor of a tax increase like that. But there's lots of wiggle room for next year for, for maybes and, and couldhaves.
What I know about the, according to the board attorney, fees are going to be $8,000 a year per account, which are lower than what we're paying now, okay? By about $20,000, $25,000, okay? We'll be allowed to maintain a local checking account to pay regular bills and to pay monthly pensions out of. Beyond that, I don't, there's no, there's no more. The bill's 210 pages, but it doesn't address. One, one expense that's going to be substantial is when we transfer that money, whether we, we have it all dumped in a checking account and they take it, or they take the investments and dump, would be to sell all those stocks and bonds that are currently held in those accounts. It could be, that could be, I don't know, $20,000, $30,000, $40,000. I mean, I, depending on commissions and, and amounts of, that they're held in certain things, and some things cost more to sell than others. So I, I don't know. I don't know what the initial cost of it's going to be. I, I guess really what I would, and I, I, I'm listening to that, to that 1.9. And yeah, you could take money out of the general fund. You could. Okay? You can absolutely do that. That's, I don't know if I would, but that's, it's worth, yeah. And it, it's, you know, it's, but once you, you know, as we always say, once you don't levy the full amount or what you're requesting, you never get that back. That's gone. You go from 2.5 to 1.9, that, that 0.6 is gone forever. So it's a, I get the property tax thing, I really do. In, in my opinion, okay, and, and this is, this is, I, I know it's been discussed and, and I'm not advocating it. The only way to, the, the best way you could address using general fund money. that, the only way to, the best way you could address using general fund money would be to raise the sales tax. And I'm not sure there's the decision to do that. You'd have to raise, raise the sales tax if you wanted to make a zero tax levy, zero, nothing, no general fund, 4 percent, 4 cents. Nobody's going to do that, okay? If you raised it 1 percent, it would get, if you had 0.75, I think we'd get a million five, something like that. So, but there's no way you can raise other fees, camping fees or this or that, to come up with anything like that kind of money. Sales tax is the only thing that does that. And I know the argument against that. It's a regressive tax, it's a, you know, it scares business away from Jacksonville. I'm not advocating that. I'm just saying, that's the way, that's the only way to garner a huge amount of money at once. But I don't know if the, if the councils, you know, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying, that's what you do. So, a lot of unknowns with this pension stuff right now.
And if I could address one thing you mentioned, that's something that Skip Rashaw mentions in the past, that if we don't increase our property tax request a certain amount, then it's gone forever. But by gone, you mean that the people of Jacksonville get to keep it? They get to keep it for personal expenses?
If you're saying that we're going to save $50,000, and I've asked Adam Withie this question every year, I asked John Ith the question every year, what would that save the average property tax payer?
But are you accumulating that over years?
Right, but I mean, that's every year 50,000, and as...
I know, I know. I'm just saying, it would affect a tens of dollars.
Right, but as, not even that. I mean, it's a small amount. But as Alderman Wonkel has said in past years in discussion, like, we, what happened to the money from last year? We collect the money from last year, and then we start from the new high. There's a new normal every year. So at some point, at some point, there's going to be a crisis in terms of the population of the city. And if we keep increasing property taxes every year, and if our property tax base keeps going down, which last year went down 0.1 percent.
Then we'd decrease the increase this year. My Alderman Cook asked me for 2.5, it's going to be 3.5. It's going to increase, sure, but if we decreased how much we're asking to increase...
But that's assuming that we're, you're assuming that every year we're going to raise tax the maximum, which I am not going to do that as an alderman. And I would, I would encourage all my fellow aldermen to not go after the maximum property tax increase every year. I would never advocate for that.
But you just said that a while ago.
We're going after 2.5 percent.
What I said is that you're bringing up these maybes, that maybe next year we might have to come up for money, for more money for management fees for the pension. If that's the case, we could raise property tax next year.
If you wanted your taxes to go from 1.9 to 5 percent, that would be a greater burden on taxpayers than leaving it at 2.5. Is that what I'm saying?
No, it's like, an increase is an increase. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you're saying we may have to go up to 5 percent from 1.9 next year.
Right.
Because that, to me, is more burdensome than making it 2.5 and knowing that that's enough money to operate the city.
But this year, if we were to pass a 0 percent tax increase, where there was no increase...
Lose 7, 8, 10 dollars.
Again, you'd lose like that would, that would maintain in taxpayers' pockets. But if we didn't increase property tax at all, our request, everyone's property tax in general would go up 0.1 percent, just because the tax base of the city has gone down 0.1 percent in the past year. It's only gone up 5 percent in the past year, and we've raised property tax increases 25 percent.
Steve, one of the things you're doing, one of the things you're doing here is you're going to cut money back from capital improvement projects, and you're talking about taking more money out of the general fund, which interprets to services for this community. That's what you're advocating.
If you look at the audit from 2017 to 2018, the golf course lost $149,000 in 2017. In 2018, it lost about 197,000, about $50,000. So the same amount of money I'm talking about is money additionally that we lost in the golf course over one year. So there's lots of ways that we can cut the budget. And it could be that, I think you're talking about there's going to be savings, that we're not going to spend the entire budget, the 100 percent of the budget. So there's already going to go, there's going to be some surplus funds that's going to go into our rainy day fund, our surplus fund, or...
But haven't you advocated putting more money into the pension funds?
Oh, yeah. We have to put...
And how do we do that?
You can't cut property taxes, you can't cut the revenue and raise the expense that much. That just doesn't make any sense.
Sure you can, because your expenses even out.
It's not logical.
But then we won't have our reserve.
Yeah, that's not logical.
No, I mean, there's other ways to cut money.
I'd like to call the question.
So right now, you're voting on reducing the property taxes?
Hold on, before you call, I don't know if that was fair, Mr. Mayor. Was everyone have the chance to contribute? Because it didn't go around, not everyone had a chance to contribute. So it's up to you if you want to call the question or not.
Is there any further discussion? Is that where you want?
Yeah, that's fine. As long as no one else had anything to say.
So again, the motion would be to amend the tax levy ordinance to a cumulative 1.9 percent increase with the difference from the 2.5 percent currently stated coming out of the general corporate purposes, leaving the fire, police, and library at the levels stated in your ordinance.
Thank you.
I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lottigan?
No.
Odenemel?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
No.
Womowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's a 5.4.
5.4 with the motion table.
Okay, now we will go back to the 2.5 motion on the table.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone for listening to my discussion on that, so. And like I said, it's like, I really hope the best for Jacksonville. I mean, it's a great town, it's got all sorts of positives against it, or positives that are going for us. But we really need to look at the financials. And I think long term, hopefully, we can, we can, we can either grow the city, bring in more tax base, or we have to start thinking about getting smaller smarter. Because if you just look at the trends, rural Illinois, there's not a lot of people moving here. And having a high tax burden is going to be a disincentive for people to move here, which is a really shame. Because we, I mean, between the improvements we've made at Lake, there's all sorts of stuff going on at the parks. The Pilot Home Club tour was fantastic, there's all sorts of great clubs. I hear there's new restaurants opening downtown. So there's all sorts of positives.
And, and, you know, I think it's a great discussion. I mean, I'm, I'm conservative, and I just always worry. And I certainly appreciate Ms. Riley and the discussion because I get what you're saying as far as bringing down our seven month or six month or whatever. And always, it comes around to me that, I always worry that, hey, we bring it down to six, and then what if we have an ice storm like we did 10 years ago? And then we, there's $700,000 that we spent that we don't get back. Then now, all of a sudden, that six month reserve is down to five months' reserve.
But 700,000...
And I appreciate that sentiment, but it's...
Five and a half then, months?
At the same time, we did...
At the recommended level.
I'm just saying, I, okay.
We did pull 1.1 million out for the fire trucks last year, so, I mean, we've done it before.
Any further discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll. It's the second reading of the ordinance, levying taxes using the 2.5 percent increase. Odenemel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Womowski?
No.
Williams?
No.
Adams?
No.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lottigan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Planning and public work, Alderman Scott.
We have two items. First one is the first reading of an ordinance with emergency clause, amending the Jacksonville zoning map for property located at 610 North Prairie Street from B1 to R4. And I assume...
On the emergency clause, is there a second on the emergency clause, Alderman Wonkel? I would ask the clerk to please call roll on the emergency clause. Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Womowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lottigan?
Yes.
Odenemel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now you're going to motion on first reading?
Do I have to read it again, or just...
Just say, move to second reading.
I'm Alderman Scott on second reading, second by Alderman Cook.
Being ordained that the Jacksonville zoning ordinance be amended for property located at 610 North Prairie, changing the zoning classification from B1 Neighborhood Business District to R4 Two Family Dwelling District.
Any discussion?
Sorry if I could ask, was anything brought up in the zoning board meeting about this? Any neighborhood, no neighborhood opposition? Okay, thank you.
I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Wonkel?
Yes.
Womowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lottigan?
Yes.
Odenemel?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Womowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lottigan?
Yes.
Odenemel?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Very good. Any old business this evening?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to bring up, I understand there's been some work going on at the Bark Park, and I thought maybe, Steve, you might be able to bring us up to speed on what's happening out at the Bark Park?
Sure. If I can go back to the very beginning, the Bark Park Initiative, the one group that was advocating for this, did a really good job. We creamed the rest of the country, and we won the $100,000 grant from Petsafe to build the dog park. And as part of that process, we had the University of Illinois come in and do a study and a plan for the, for the, for the dog park. And that plan was, went through the Parks and Lakes Committee, came before the city council, and we approved that, that plan that said, this is the different phases and the different additions that we wanted to make. And go ahead to this, to this group, you can raise money. The city's not planning on spending any funds on improvements to the dog park, but if you guys want to raise money to make improvements, go right on ahead. So in recent times, the, the group has raised a lot of money and has purchased water fountains for people and for dogs. They purchased, or they have the money and they paid for installing the water line to the park. So it hooked into the nice neighbor there, Tom Lindsterberg, and what's it called? Morgan, Scott Morgan Water District did the work.
SMG.
Yeah, SMG did the work. So that's great. We, they raised money for, the concrete work has been, been done now. The plumber's going to put in the water fountain soon. And the other big improvement that's being made now is there's a gazebo. And if you go, if you go out to the dog park, there's a small dog area and an all dog area. And the shelter gazebo will straddle the fence, so half of it will be on the small dog area and half will be on the all dog area. So you can go there and chat with people as your dogs are running around. So just the, the community has been a great supporter with all the different fundraisers and donations. There's even been some Facebook donations this is in the past, past month, like a couple hundred dollars. We had pet pictures with Santa, and I think we raised about $1,000 that day. So all these different fundraisers going on and contributions and volunteer work, so.
Will that volunteer work and donations stay up for the next 10 years when that gazebo is in ruins and needs to be repaired? That falls on city property, it's city responsibility, like the bandstand we have in Nichols Park that we're looking for funds? Hey, why don't we move that over to the dog park? They could have taken care of that. But I'm just saying, they put it on city property. Are we aware of this?
And it's going to keep the tax money here and, and like I said, the jobs and the development here. So, I'm in favor of this number. Appreciate the work that the city's done on bringing this forward.
Any other discussion? I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
The only thing that I was going to say is, as I said in workshop, it, it's been, it's been a while since I've gotten some telephone calls about some things that have been on the council agenda. And because I've received several telephone calls against this, asking me to vote against this, I'll plan to vote against this ordinance tonight based upon constituent feedback that I've received.
I have to echo that also. The only constituent feedback I've got has been also no towards this. So, I'll probably vote in that direction also.
That's funny. I've been spearheading the cannabis initiative and I haven't gotten one phone call. I guess they're all going to Mike.
I've gotten quite a few people that are like, it's very important, no matter what, why not make a commitment? But it's, um, more towns are going to do it than aren't going to do it. So, I would be yes for it.
I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Wormowski?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Lottigan?
Yes.
Odenel?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Any old business this evening?
Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to bring up, I understand there's been some work going on at the Bark Park. And I thought maybe Steve, you might be able to bring us up to speed on what's happening out at the Bark Park?
Sure. If, if I can go back to the very beginning. The Bark Park Initiative, the, the one group that was advocating for this did a really good job. We creamed the rest of the country and we won the $100,000 grant from PetSafe to build the, the dog park. And as part of that process, we had the University of Illinois come in and do a, a, a study and a plan for the, for the, for the dog park. And that plan was, went through the Parks and Lakes Committee, came before the City Council, and we approved that, that plan that said, this is the different phases and the different additions that we wanted to make. And go ahead to this, to this group, you can raise money. The city's not planning on spending any funds on improvements to the dog park. But if you guys want to raise money to make improvements, go right on ahead. So, in recent times, the, the, the group has raised a lot of money. And has purchased water fountains for people and for dogs. They purchased, or they have the money and they paid for installing the water line to the park. So, it hooked into the nice neighbor there, Tom Lindsterberg. And what's it called? Morgan, Scott Morgan Water District did the work. Yeah, SMG did the work. So, that's great. We, they raised money for, the concrete work has been, been done now. The plumber's going to put in the water fountain soon. And the, the other big improvement that's being made now is there's a gazebo. And if you go, if you go out to the dog park, there's a small dog area and an all-dog area. And the shelter gazebo will straddle the fence. So, half of it will be on the small dog area and half will be on the all-dog area. So, you can go there and chat with people as your dogs are, are running around. So, just the, the, the community has been a great supporter with all the different fundraisers and donations. There's even been some Facebook donations this in the past, past month, like a couple hundred dollars. We had pet pictures with Santa, and I think we raised about a thousand dollars that day. So, all these different fundraisers going on and, and contributions and volunteer work, so.
Will that volunteer work and donation stay up for the next 10 years when that gazebo is in ruins and needs to be repaired? That falls on city property. It's city responsibility. Like the bandstand we have in Nichols Park that we're looking for funds, hey, why don't we move that over to the dog park? They could have taken care of that. But I'm just saying, they put it on city property. Are we aware of this?
Right. Like I said, that, that was part of the, the plans that we approved. I mean, everyone in the City Council voted to approve the plans, and we said that they could do that. And they've gone through the Parks Department to, to do this. So, if you look back, what's it been like, four years, I think, since we built the dog park? There's been lots of money coming in to make these additions.
Right.
So, going forward, there's still that support for the parks that they would bring money to, to pay for that.
Steve, what I would suggest, and I, there's some great things going on out there. The one concern that I've got is that the city's not involved in the financing of any of the structures. And we don't issue permits for structures that are built on city property. Typically, anything that's built still is subject to a review from Kelly's office just to make sure it's up to code, especially like electrical codes or ADA. And that would be the only thing that you may want to consider is run, as you do these things. I'm not saying it has to come back here to City Council, because I don't know that you necessarily want to micromanage anything. But to make sure that down the road, we don't get, we, meaning you, meaning the dog park, get into problems because the structure you built is not ADA compliant.
So, you're absolutely right. And the ADA planning was part of the U of I plans. So, the ADA compliance is inside there. And a volunteer group can't just go to the city and build something. So, all of these have gone through the Parks and Lakes Department. Everything's been working through Kelly Hall, and he's been in the discussions. So, the, the group is not just doing whatever they want on city property. Yeah. Yeah. So, this has all gone through the, the Parks and Lakes, or community development, whatever it's called now, recreational facility department. So, and they've worked really closely with, with Adam, who runs the parks on a day-to-day, and they've talked to Kelly. So, I think the mayor signed off on the water line to the park. So, it's, it's been going through the administrative level. So.
Steve, do you, I mean, do you think that the, um, the Bark Park Committee, because it was in 2015, and it was a conceptual plan, and many of the aldermen that are now serving on the council aren't aware of what those plans were. So, I mean, would it be feasible that the Bark Park, when they're getting ready to put in a water line or get it, getting ready to build a gazebo, maybe just to share and have, send it to Kelly's office and make sure we all get copies of what's happening? So, when people in the community ask. And I think Dan brings up a good point about being ADA and insurance and, and things change with the city on a regular basis. So, maybe what was in 2015 may not be now. And I think as a, as a council or as a city-
So, a lot of those, a lot of, I'd ask you to touch on a nerve here, because a lot of the planning for the gazebo and for the water line has been going on for two years. There's been discussion for two years. So, this went through Marcy Patterson, who previously had your job as a chair, and she signed off on that. And she was in favor of it. And then she took that to Kelly. So, this has been planning for a long time. I can go back and I can-
I don't think anybody's complaining your idea or thinking the Bark Park's not doing amazing and great things for the community. I don't, I don't think that's the case at all.
I didn't, I didn't take that.
I think it's just a courtesy, maybe to let the members of the council and the city know what's going on out at the Bark Park. Breaking ground for a gazebo, fantastic. Let us know.
Okay.
Not a big deal. So, don't be offended by a simple question.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not offended. My offense that I said was that there's been lots of complaints when people have donated that what's going on with the money. And the problem was, is that, like I said, it was a two-year process from getting the actual plans approved through, through Marcy Patterson and through the Parks and Lakes Committee, and then through Kelly, and then the actual implementation. And then the other delay has been with weather. The weather was just horrible this year. And it set back all the contractors. They wanted to be doing all this work in, in the summer, and it's being put on now. So, I, I understand that the City Council wants to know, and I can, I can go back home tonight and email everyone the dog park plans that the City Council approved a couple of years ago.
It was a conceptual plan. And I don't believe, if you drill all the way down, does it say what materials will be used? And on like the pavilion, like Jeff rings up. I know you sent that to me, but-
So, I think the actual, that has to be worked out through the Parks and Lakes Department.
But I mean-
Yeah.
Right. So, that's what we're, I mean, was being brought up, is maybe, maybe we should know what this, what is it going to look like?
Okay.
What's it going to be made of? Is there, did Kelly receive the sketch of it?
I mean, that's-
Did he receive the sketch of it?
I, I, I don't have, he's never come to, to the, no, he's never come to, um, the Parks and Lakes Committee, I think, with that, that information. So, I, I, I haven't actually seen the sketch, because-
I think that's the question. I mean, when, when asked, what does it look like, no one seems to know. And I think as a city, and as a council, and as a chair of the Parks and Lakes Committee, we just need to know, as a courtesy, not to downplay it, not to veto it, not to take it away. But what is it going to look like? We're going to be responsible for it in 10 years.
So, I guess what you should do is probably invite the, the dog committee to come. So, I mean, I guess, let me point out something to you that's going on here. So, I'm on the City Council, I'm on the Parks and Lakes Committee. And then as a side project with Ron Gray and other people, we created a park foundation. And that's kind of umbrella organization with different committees. So, we have, um, helmets, a helmet project where we give out helmets to people. I'm going to forget someone. We have a group that advocates for trails in town. We have a group that, uh, the Dog Park Committee. We have a group that's doing a community garden. And all of these projects are kind of independent. And they're raising their own funds and spending their own funds and working with the city to do that or through different organizations. And the, the Park Foundation is also not a side saddle organization to the city. It's set up where it can help any community in Morton County. So, if there's a project in South Jacksonville, or Murrayville, or anything in Morton County, it's not limited just to the city. So, and a lot of the stuff that's going on with the, the Bark Park Committee, I mean, I don't go to all the meetings. I'm not keeping up on the stuff. Mostly what I'm doing is I'm just kind of double checking the finances, and I sign off on some of the checks. I don't have to sign off on it. There's, there's an organization that's set up. So.
Steve, I appreciate everything you do on that, too. The only thing I'm just kind of following here is what I'm looking at is everything they do is fine, and there was a plan in place that came out. But it's still city property?
Yeah.
So, the fact that no one comes in and says, we're in our next step, we do this with utilities, or if they change anything in that level, or they come in, this is our next process with what they're doing. Who knew that they could have been pouring concrete and putting up a Morton building out there on city property?
The, um-
I mean, because my understanding is Kelly was unaware that concrete was getting poured. So, I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm just saying-
Yeah.
They need to come forward, even though the city has allotted them property, it is not their property-
True.
-to do what they want as they wish. They need to come forward to the city and say, we're in this process of our project. This is what we'll be doing. That's on them to do that.
So, my suggestion would be, why don't we have the Dog Park Committee come here? And you can ask them that question directly? Because I think the answer they'll give you is that they did. They did work with the city.
Okay. Well, that's fine. Or, you know, and I'm just saying, work with our chairperson on Parks and Lakes so that a report can be given. I mean, that's simple. If they have a contact with the committee, I think that's fine. But it's, again, it's just something I'm looking at going, we have a, many things in this city that we're trying to maintain and figure out how to keep, let alone having someone else build another structure that's going to fall on the city to maintain and take care of 10, 15 years down the road.
If you go to Nichols Park, if you look at the new pavilion that was put up, I mean, I don't think the City Council went through all the plans for that, that new pavilion, the one on the, the east side of the park. I forget. There was some family who had Ludwig Pavilion. So, they donated a bunch of money to the city, and they said, you had to do something by a certain time, otherwise the money goes somewhere else. And so, all those plans went through. I think it went through administratively. I don't know if it went before the City Council or what happened.
Well, I don't know if it did or not either. Did it?
And again, just because we're having this friendly conversation, really no different than earlier when we talked about the bike path out of the lake, that if there's going to be changes, just a courtesy to kind of bring the council up to speed. I think it's very similar. And I think you, you know, agreed to that earlier. So, it's similar.
Yeah. And the one thing to keep in mind is that when you're talking about stuff that the city's doing, the city's spending the money, and we're getting the money from the taxpayers. And this is something where individuals are donating something. So, I don't think we'd have the same say. I think you're totally right. You do have to think long-term, like what the maintenance costs and, and, all those considerations have to be made. So, but, I mean, I think they wanted to have a round gazebo. And that wasn't the plans, but that was too expensive to do. So, they have a rectangular gazebo. So, I think that's the only real change from the, the plans laid out from the Dog Park. So, but if you also look at that, if you look at the plans, they had plans for a different parking lot with swales and different things. And, and, and that didn't, didn't happen because of cost considerations when that was done. So.
I think Steve has, we all recognize the conceptual plan was just a conceptual plan. As our somewhat substantial variations from that doesn't mean it's wrong. It just means that this group doesn't know what that's going on, and that's where the Dog Park Committee can kind of update these kinds of times what's going on. And if it's already updating, parks and lakes, the county's office, they can be updated, but some of it isn't.
Yeah. So, so, like we, like we all said, like, let's bring the dog committee here and just ask them ourselves.
They just need to come here when they're getting ready to do a project. It's, I mean, it's not a big deal at all. They're doing a great work out.
Okay.
But I think it seems like, when you're getting ready to build something, just come and tell us what they're doing.
Okay.
There's nobody that's complaining about the Dog Park. It's great. I mean, people come, a lot of, a lot of people I know go out there, and they have a great time and everything. It's just that, you know, some sort of idea of what is going on would be great. Especially for me, I don't know. Because like I say, I don't, I don't take my dog out there. But, you know, it's, it's no big deal for me. But, you know, the people that enjoy that, it's great for them. It's great for our, you know, our community. But you still need to know something, what's going on. And I think that'd be great.
If I could just talk, just like for something that was brought up earlier in the meeting about the, the, the recreational trail at the lake, did anybody in the City Council know they were going to put up a bunch of fences? Was not in the plans. It just happened administratively. It just happened. I don't know how we paid for it. Did anybody know that there's, there's been some work at, um, Movastair Lake? We, we had talked previously about putting in a boat launch area. And there's been a bunch of earthwork done, kind of like in the Kiwanis Grove area, to the west of where the existing boat dock is. And there's basically the, the outlines of a new boat launch area. And the city did that. The city paid for the work. And that hasn't come up. So, there's a bunch of stuff, there's a bunch of stuff that happens administratively on a day-to-day basis that we don't know about. And I, I agree with you. I think we should know more. So, but just, just remember that stuff happens with city projects, too. And the administration knows about it because they're here on a day-to-day basis, but we're only here, you know, two times a month. They didn't, they didn't do anything with the boat launch area. It's like a new area. Okay, the canoe club's great, yeah. Okay.
And if there's any plans to change the canoe club's dock, they're going to bring it to the council like the Dog Park should. And the question I was, been waiting about was the Parks and Lakes Trail, with the extra money that was spent and on the fencing or whatnot, that didn't come to the council for approval. And that seems to be a problem is just that there's extra amounts that are justified, but didn't get approval until they come to council after somebody decided that it was okay. I'm not against anything out at the, the lake for the trail. I'd actually like to know more about whether we got the grant to continue on Phase 3, because that would be a good investment to be able to get people around the lake to enjoy it. And I'm all for anything out there. I just think that we should at least have an idea before it comes to us to pay for it.
If I could just, Mr. Bradshaw, I was going to ask you at some point, just haven't got around to it. But can, can you pick out the funding that, that we spent on the work done at Lake Movastair with the, the boat launch area and with the canoe club area? And then also, if you can, if you can find out how much we spent on just the additions to the, um, to the, to the bike trail, to the recreational trail, like the fences and stuff like that, how much we spent on that? Because I don't think that, that never came up before City Council. Yeah.
If you want the information, I'm in change. There's about $9,000, not mixed asphalt surface course, $13,000 detective warnings, $14,400 for pipe coverts, $45,000 paper markings and marking lines. And there's a decrease in various sizes of course.
So, we, we spent $13,000 on detectable warning, what was that?
Detectable warning, special detectable warning, so it's going to score a 5 or 50 dollars for sure. That's not the one.
Oh, okay. Right. But that doesn't, what I was asking specifically, like, how much is, it probably didn't come up. Maybe the city did it itself with the, with its, with our, we have carpenters on staff. So, maybe the city, we built it ourselves. So, I know there's some people who are carpenters who are usually mowing the lawn, who work for the Parks Department. Maybe it might just be hours on the city. But if we could find how much they spent on materials and stuff out there, that'd be great. Same thing with the boat launch area. How much did we spend on that earthwork stuff? We could just bring it, send it to us, or we could talk about the January meeting. For the amount of work that got done, someone spent time. So, time to do it, like, there, there was money had to be spent out there. So. Yeah. But, but, you know, going back to what you originally brought up, it's like, go ahead and invite the dog committee to come out.
I think to Aaron's point, it'd be great for them maybe to come, but really, we just want to know, hey, we're getting ready to break ground on a pavilion. So, people-
There just needs to be an avenue of communication with the Parks and Lakes Committee. That's all.
And that, that also could have come from the, from the city, from the Parks and Lakes Department, that they could have told us that that was going on. So.
Correct.
I mean, I know just because of my association with the, the committee, but-
But I think we've done beat this dog, unfortunately. But on that note, I want to say, I saw your pictures. You got one heck of an eye. My son and his wife were there with their puppy.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And every one of those pictures that came through looked great, Steve.
Thank you. Even though the cats came.
Okay, any new business?
I've got some.
Yeah.
In the packet tonight, you have a draft copy of the operating budget for 2020. If you want to review that, if you have any questions about it, you can contact the city clerk or myself. And the second item is from my family to yours. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Bye, Helmut.
Yeah. Any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Lottigan. We are adjourned.